Good evening, welcome to our first meeting of the new year by the Lake Mills Board of Education. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification meeting notice?
So, the original agenda was posted on January 4th at the Lake Mills leader, with the Lake Mills leader, at the library and the post office in the bank of Lake Mills. We updated the agenda on 10th so that we could include all the materials to support the 2019-20 district calendar and also added an item to the closed session so that we could approve the minutes. So, that was reposted on January 10th at all those same locations.
Could we stand and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call the school board meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Don Delaney?
Here.
Rachel Davies?
Here.
Robert D'Imperio?
Here.
David Rado?
Here.
Richard Mason?
Here.
Any agenda revisions this time? I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I would move approval of the agenda as printed.
Second?
Move to approve the agenda in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is passed. Administrative reports. Wendy, you're going to start off?
Yes, I'm happy to introduce Mr. Paul France from Baker Tilly. He's going to present our district's audit report from this past year.
Thanks Wendy. So, tonight, prior to tonight, you should have received two bound documents from us. One is the financial statement document and one is the communication to those charged with governance and management. And then tonight, let's pass out a high-level summary of both documents. I'll use that high-level summary to kind of walk you through those two documents. So, on the first page, our audit objective was to express an opinion on the financial statements of Lake Mills Area School District as of June 30, 2018. We have done so.
Yep.
We've issued an unmodified opinion. It's commonly referred to as a clean opinion. It's the highest level assurance that you can receive from your auditors. What that opinion represents is that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and that all accounting principles have been applied consistently between years and that all financial disclosures within that document properly reflect the information within there. The next page of the handout are some highlights of the financial information. Start in the first column, the general fund. Had $16.8 million of revenue and $14.9 million of expenditures. When factoring out transfers to other funds, had a change in fund balance of $63,000 to the positive. The fund balance in the general fund was just over $4.1 million as of year end. And that represents about 24% of reserves on hand compared to your 2019 budget. So, we recommend somewhere in your general fund that you're somewhere between 10% to 25% of your operating expenditures for future years. So, your 24% represents a very healthy reserve and again, a very strong financial position. The bottom of this page, give you a quick glance of your budgetary compliance in the general fund. When you put together your budget, you had a balanced budget and again, you added $63,000 to fund balance this year. So, you brought in $212,000 more than you had budgeted in revenues and spent about $150,000 more than planned. So, again, the net was a positive. The other funds there, special ed fund, food service fund, debt service fund, capital project fund, all the reserves on hand are laid out in the middle of the page there for you. Any questions on the financial records as presented here? On the next page, I've summarized your long-term debt. You have about $28 million of bonds and notes outstanding as of year end, small capital lease of $46,000, and then some obligations related to employee benefits that will be paid back as those costs are incurred. Those numbers are determined by an actuary as of year end. And again, it isn't a true liability at this point that you need to worry about paying back. It will be paid back over time, again, as those costs are incurred. In addition, we also performed a federal and state award single audit, received cooperation going through that. There were a few compliance issues noted during that audit and are detailed out in the back part of the financial statements, but nothing significant that resulted in a material weakness or a significant deficiency to a direct program. On the last page of the handout, communication to those charged with governance, that summary. As we've discussed in years past, there are two material weaknesses that we identified, first being related to lack of segregation of duties over the significant transaction cycles. This is a material weakness that we give about 95% of our clients and just is due to not having enough bodies in the process to have appropriate checks and balances. That is common across governments and entities of your size and it's just important that you're aware of that so that you can be proactive in the informations that's being presented to you. The next material weakness relates to the financial reporting. So, that financial statement document that I laid out or we provided you previously, we prepare for the district and due to the fact that we prepare that for you, we have to let you know that we prepare that for you. We prepare that for 95% of our clients. Two and again, it's, it would be the, it's not worth the cost of having a CPA on staff to prepare that document and pay them year-round in order to do that. So, we've decided to outsource that. Again, it's just our responsibility to bring that to your attention. Also, in that document, there's a two-way communication regarding your audit. That's looking forward to the June 30, 2019 audit, lays out the timeline when we start planning for next year's audit and we provide you some thought-provoking questions. If there's things that you'd like us to do differently, kick the tires a little bit harder on, we have our contact information in there for you to reach out to us. Got some other comments and recommendations in there, best practices items. You know, in the number of years that we've been working with the district, you know, especially since Wendy has rejoined, we've checked off a number of the best practice items and, you know, things have become very stable within that office and Wendy and her team do a very good job in preparation for the audit. Lastly, there's a section there related to required communication to those charged with governance and then there we lay out if there are any new accounting principles that were adopted during the year, we lay out the accounting estimates that we evaluated during the course of the audit. If there are any disagreements with management, they would be noted in there. Truthfully, if there were, you would have heard about them long before today, but we are required to communicate that to you in some form or fashion, if it's oral or writing. So, we just note that in there that there were none. And lastly, we lay out any non-attest audit services that we've provided to proclaim our independence, which allows us to do your audit. So, again, like I alluded to, we received nothing but cooperation from management and it was a very efficient process, I think, on both ends. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions for me, but otherwise, again, it's a privilege to work with the district.
Any questions? Anybody? Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Paul.
Mrs. Thompson, elementary principal.
Good evening. We are back in action at the elementary school. We started off the new year with an all-school assembly to go over our school rules and to introduce what we call the Pride Pledge. Each month, we are focusing on a new letter and we've been doing this since the beginning of the school year. We spelt out LCAT to start the year and now in January, we're starting the word Pride. So, for the month of January, we are teaching our students about paying attention and making sure that when you're paying attention and listening, you're going to be able to reach your hopes and dreams. So, that assembly, that's what we were focused on. Our reading department with Mrs. Mowen and Mrs. Nichols, they brought in therapy dogs for our students to be able to read to the therapy dogs and it was a win-win for the dogs owners to be able to bring in the dogs, but then for our students to have that extra special opportunity to read to the dogs. And then finally, I'm working with the rec department to investigate the possibility of a before and after-school care program for our students. We're going to be starting that investigation and with a parent survey to see if this is something that our parents would be interested in. So, more to come as we gather more information. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Bauer, middle school principal.
Good evening. One thing I couldn't tell you about when we met in December is that we planned, I don't know if a lot, I don't remember how much got posted online, I was supposed to post a lot more, but the day before Christmas break, we called all the students in for an assembly and told them they were going to have a snow day. And so, what we did is we had, we baked 500 cookies, a cookie for every single kid, decorated them. We had hot chocolate cafe, they could go outside and play snow football, but there was no snow. There, there was open gym, there was playground time, there was movies, there was a music studio, snowflake making, I can't even think of all the different activities, but we planned those for the entire day for the kids and they just moved activity to activity throughout the day. Teachers also got a little break because the office staff and I planned it all, so they didn't really have to plan anything that last day and we also gave them an hour lunch. So, that was our snow day, I think. The thing is, you do all this planning, but you can only do it once because it was a surprise. So, but, but we pulled it off. It was, it was good fun. I got 32,000 steps that day. So, but then I had a week and a half off, so it was okay. So, boys' basketball has wrapped up and we are now into girls' basketball season and wrestling season. We're in the middle of our eye-ready testing, which is new for a lot of our staff this year, so we'll be curious to see how our progress is there. Winter is not always something we used to use map on, so I'm curious to see how those scores look. We are also starting scheduling already, so parents of middle school students can anticipate in the next three or four weeks that they'll be getting a survey about what they want their children to take for next year. And then, the high school is also visiting the middle school at this time to talk about our eighth graders transitioning to ninth grade. And finally, at my next board report, I will be able to talk to you a little bit about the talent show and what happened there. Any questions for me?
Could you talk about the transition from middle to high school?
Yeah.
About elementary to middle school?
So, yes. I have spoken to a woman by the name of Lisa Latson. She's kind of a third party that we've hired to come in and take a peek at some of the transition practices we've been doing. I actually just visited the elementary school today. We will be looking at systems, at staffing, at students, and at parents in terms of transitioning our kids. What I saw today, I'm, I'm really surprised our fifth graders are doing as well as they are. There's a lot of things that are very, very different. Amanda will then be coming to the middle school, kind of seeing how her students from last year are doing and maybe noting some things that I didn't note about how fourth grade to fifth grade is different from her perspective. Where I'm sat in some classrooms, we talked systems, I even asked Troy, I'll be, who was there, Troy A. Strike, who happened to be walking through. I also hope to set up a meeting with some fourth grade kiddos and say, you know, if there's one thing from fourth grade that you could carry to fifth grade in terms of how things run, what would that be? But there are little things that I noticed, like they, and I'm going to put a shameless plug-in for playground because even the playground piece, you know, I just looked out the window, I'm like, they have basketball and four-square and all this space and, and a huge playground that they could, and they have all those choices at once. We literally take our fifth graders and plop them out into a grass field with a couple soccer balls and a couple of footballs and expect them to have the capability to manage that kind of social situation. So, I mean, and that's just one, I had three pages of differences that I took down today that we'll be looking at. So, the student services team will also be traveling over to the elementary school as well as some of our teachers to note those things as well.
Good.
Well, will you also be, so that's awesome that you're talking to the fourth graders. Will you be talking to the fifth graders to say, you know, if there's one thing you could have now that you didn't, you know, that you don't or whatever, or one thing you missed or some, you know what I mean? Seeing it from that perspective?
Yeah. And we could do that. I think it's, we usually do that. They normally put together a video for the incoming fourth graders that say, hey, this is what we were worried about when we came into fifth grade and this is how it, so it would be an easy conversation to have because we naturally have that conversation anyway. And it always comes down to lockers, locks on lockers, but, but we'll still have that conversation with them as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, special ed director and assistant middle school principal.
I just have a couple professional development updates that I wanted to give you that the special ed team have been doing since last time. I sent a small team for additional training on college and career-ready IEPs. We have probably, over the last few years, some new staff within our teacher roles, so bringing that back again so that they can get some additional training on how to lead our IEPs to be more effective. They're going to be sharing that at our upcoming staff meeting. And then I have sent a team of four members that range from all the, like, early childhood all the way up through high school to be part of a rural autism support team. So, this is a collaboration with four districts of Jefferson, Cambridge, Fort Atkinson, and us, led by Kate McGinnity. And then, we think it's probably one of the first ones in the state where it's kind of a rural collaborative. And so, they just had their first day of training within the last week or week and a half and we're looking at putting on an autism institute for staff in this area in August.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Vogel is the high school principal. He isn't with us tonight, but Mrs. Strike has a report.
He asked, he asked me to share with you about the upcoming ACT test dates. So, on February 20th, the juniors will be taking the ACT here at the high school. What an exciting component that we added last year is that the sophomores on that day all tour UW Madison, Madison College, and Edgewood College. It's a whirlwind day, but rather than giving them the day off, we take them to those sites. And then, on February 21st, when the juniors are taking the workies, those sophomores take a pre-ACT. So, he wanted me to remind you of those upcoming testing dates and different schedules, February 20th and 21st.
Mrs. Silverode.
So, as you've already heard.
Learning and Student Services Director.
Sorry. Yes, as you've already heard, we are starting the assessments portion of the year, which seems to be, starts now with the winter assessments and then goes into ACT and then forward is not too far behind that. So, now comes all the prep work for all of that fun stuff. Pam, wanted me to update you on the safety grant and what's really exciting is all the work for the safety, for the first safety grant that we were awarded is done. We are just waiting on some wording on how to adjust our claims so that they match because prices always fluctuate just a little bit and then we can close that grant out. So, that's really cool. We got security film put on certain windows. We got the cameras at each of, the video camera entrances at each of the three schools and then we updated some of the cameras in the schools with that grant. So, that work is done. So, a big thank you to Rod and Chris for that because they've worked really hard and to Wendy for all her help with the budgeting portions of that. The grant number two, we are well on our way with that one. We've done the mental health required training for our teachers. Rod has purchased, we've received like decals for the windows that will put classroom numbers on the outsides of the windows, so like if something were to happen where someone on the outside needed to find, like if the firemen needed to come to room 312 at the high school, they could find it from the outside. It's labeled on the outside of the building. But he's waiting for the weather to be more temperate so that the decals stick, if that makes sense, before he, just minor little things. And that's, that's the big thing. The big thing that we're really waiting on is the PA system at the high school and I think he said someone's coming in next week to do that, but he wants to make sure that it can line into all of the stuff that's happening with the referendum. So, he's, he's very cognizant of making sure that what we purchase can handle the addition of more classrooms and more speakers and all that kind of fun stuff. So, that's the update on the safety grant, but lots of, lots of fun stuff there. And then, I'd like to do the annual proclamation that it is Crossing Guard Recognition Week this week. So, do you want me to read the proclamation?
No.
Okay. But everybody should say thank you to a crossing guard when you see them. They do a wonderful job and they are really, a really great group of people. We hired Brianna. You can have her paperwork tonight to approve her and it was really cool as I brought her a little gift this morning. She was greeting one of the children that she sees walk, she crosses her every day and she knew her by name and she knew her weekend plans. She knew that this last week and she goes, "How was your weekend with grandma?" And I just think that that's so cool that she started off this girl's week by, with a warm welcome and they sat and talked for at least two minutes. Then I had to leave. They could have sat and talked for 10 minutes, I don't know, but this is a girl who's new to our school this year and this is an example of a crossing guard being warm and friendly and starting off a day's, a child's day in such a positive, warm manner, which is just awesome. So, that's Brianna. You're going to see her paperwork tonight, but awesome, really impressed so far.
Good. Questions? Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brockert, do you have any more to say?
Nope.
And Mrs. Strike is a lot.
I do not, actually. I just wanted to remind you that we'll have our spring election for board members on Tuesday, April 2nd. We had the drawing of the lots. We just have two candidates and the order that they will appear on the ballot will be Robert D'Imperio first and Dawn Delaney second. In your packet this month is the report that we started to do for the number of donations for the calendar year of 2018. And in that year, we were fortunate enough to receive $48,266.68 in donations, which is absolutely incredible. Attached in your packet, we have included the October-through-December usage report of social media. You'll see that what posts had the most interaction, how many we're using on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. And I just kind of chuckled when I saw it because the number-one post in the last three months was about our tractor refurbishing grant and it was interacted with by over 11,000 people. So, that was the top story in the last three months. I thought maybe the referendum passing or, but it was, it was the grand. So, that was, that was a fun thing to see. And then, you'll also see Ben Dayton's recreation report. We continue to do those satisfaction surveys and so, I kind of wanted to highlight tonight the satisfaction survey from this last season and I think it's really impressive to see the question, "Would you recommend this class to others?" 100% said yes. And when asked about enjoyment, 100% were satisfied or very satisfied. So, I think those were really exciting things to see for the recreation department as they continue to grow and expand.
Okay, questions? Anybody? Okay, thank you. Board reports. Mr. Cooper Buckholz.
So, this is what we've got happening at the high school. For sports, boys' basketball is currently 12-3. They won their last game against Sauk Prairie, 54-43, and they are 2-0 in conference. Their next game is against Lakeside at home, I believe Tuesday. Girls' basketball is 15-3 and 3-1 in conference. They won their last game against Lodi, 40-34, and their next game is against Pointe at home on Thursday. The wrestling team, their last tournament was Saturday in Belmont. They had two second-place finishers, were both freshmen, and they are in Monroe on Saturday for the next tournament. Show choir had their first meeting to finalize plans for their New York trip in March. The forensics team is holding their tryouts this week and big one for this week, it's finals week or semester exams at the high school. And coffee consumption and sleepless nights are at an all-time high for the high school students.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Delaney, correspondence.
Yes, we received two thank you cards this month. One was from Cindy Sandberg and the other was from Diane McFarland.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rado, last resolutions.
Yeah, so, next week, I'll be attending the Wisconsin Association of School Board meeting as a delegate. There are 22 resolutions that they're looking at and I didn't know if anyone had any questions, but a few of the, the highlights that jumped out, the first bunch actually were in reference to some of the things that the LMEA, LMESP, LMASO brought to our attention. And those are resolutions 1907, which is calling for the special education funding for the state to increase to 60% versus the 33% that it's been held at since 2008. Resolution 1908, protecting the common school fund and, which allows many districts to fund their libraries. Resolution 1910, opposing the use of state or federal taxpayer dollars to subsidize non-public schools or non-public students and parents throughout a system of vouchers and scholarship tax credits and tuition tax credits. And 1911, eliminating special need, specifically calls to eliminate special needs vouchers. What I found in the, as you look through them, there is somewhat of a few common threads. One of them is leveling the playing field on a socio-economic level, eliminating competitive grants which favor wealthier districts that are able to have the staff, to have someone applying for those grants, whereas the lower socioeconomic districts that can't have someone specifically set aside to apply for these competitive grants. There were a number of issues dealing with helping schools and the deal with mental health issues, also looking at, starting to examine how early we can reach kids to get them on the right track even prior to 4K. So, I think there's a lot of real fine resolutions in there that I feel like we'll be supporting. Were there any questions or is there any feedback?
May?
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Mr. D'Imperio, facilities committee.
Well, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, that immediately following the successful referendum, the design team got together to begin the planning and this included meetings with affected teachers. It also included meetings with area employers in terms of some of the technical education initiatives that, that were going on. And, and over the last couple of months, that information and meetings, in some cases, there were two meetings a week and, and there were site visits to a number of different schools where, where it was viewed that the particular function under consideration was, was viewed to be state-of-the-art and, and that sort of thing. And so, all of this has resulted in a preliminary drawing, if you would, what is referred to as a schematic design phase. And I'd like to caution this, I'd like to go through it a little bit, but before that, this is very preliminary. At, as, at this time, our construction manager is going through and doing an estimate of probable cost and so, it is quite possible that everything we see may, may be, may be changing. We think the general thrust is going to stay the same. Materials may change, some of the details may change, but this, this is where we are now. We'd like to think within the next month or month and a half, we'd have something more final. We better because we're going out for bids at about that, at about that time. This is the vocational wing, the addition that is, that is put down at the, at the lower level. And this was going to be a subject for renovation. The shaded area is existing, which is not going to be touched. And, and several themes came through and one was, let's create a technology suite. Let's, let's work on the relationships between the different activities. And so, there is going to be remodeling done here in the small engines and construction, a tech ed classroom, the welding and the woods labs are going to get some attention. The fitness center is going to be relocated so that it'll have an outside entrance to allow some of the athletes who need to come in at odd hours to, to work out and whatnot. And then, down in this area, if this can raise up a little bit, as, as the discussions went on, it was determined that- on, it was determined that it would be good to have a relationship between the ag program and the culinary arts. And so, the, the relationship, the proximity are here. The culinary arts is gonna include a demonstration kitchen and then student stations where, where those practices can be learned, as well as the improvements here in the ag classroom. So, that activity is down at the lower level. Now, if we can move to the next area, if it can slide over a little bit this way, we'll first look, whoop, wrong way. There we go. First of all, the addition. And that addition will start at that outside wall, which is, which is right here. And it was determined that it would be nice to have the, the basic IMC functions here where we can get some natural light. And then as we move into the remodeled area, the instructional area, the computer lab, which is similar to what is being currently back here, but it's gonna be in its own dedicated space. There will be small group breakout areas. And then there are gonna be four classrooms in that addition, as well as several restrooms. And then in this existing space where we're standing now, to develop two business classrooms, the business department noted that they did not need a lot of outside light. In fact, it was preferred because of the computers to, to be more inboard. There will be remodeling that will take care, relocate the school store, some office space, upgrading of the, of the restrooms, and that's gonna include a, a family restroom in that area as well. The shaded area is existing, which will, will not be touched. There will be another corridor put in here so that the circulation will, will work much better than having two dead-end corridors. And finally, you might be interested in what the addition's gonna look like. I think this is really cool. This is, this is the dividing line between the new and the old. And what was determined would be that to, to continue the basic appearance on the, on the north and south elevations with the clear story, as well as then in the corners having some light. And then having, for the library to have extensive natural light coming in. The materials, there's, will, will not match, but they will be complementary and those are being currently determined at this point. So, that's where we are at this moment. Again, we, we would like to think that this is pretty much what we're gonna have. When we get the numbers at the end of the month, we can come back and talk about that at our next meeting. So. Questions?
Anybody have questions? Okay. Thank you very much. I'm gonna take the policy committee.
Thank you.
She did an incredible, credible job. The policy committee met last Thursday, January 10th. And twice a year, we, we make sure that we review the policies. And we have a, a third party that actually we employ to look at and keep us updated called Niola. And there were 58 policies that were either, that were either updated, making them clearer, clearer to understand and more consistent, and reflected any changes that the law might have invoked over the last year. So, that was done. We got it, we went over those and this will be considered the first reading. All of you had a chance to, to look at it and I'm sure you went through those in detail. And the second part of it is the policies of 3433 and 4433. And that has to do with giving leave donation to a staff member that's seriously ill. And those, that's kind of an interesting and exciting policy that we've, we've just presented. And the last one is, we've been waiting for new wording on the state's new Start College Now program. And that policy is a reflection of that. So, you'll see that attached to your, all of the policies, all 58 and plus these other three. And this will be considered a first reading tonight. And then the final reading will be next, either at the 28th meeting, the special meeting or next month. Questions on those? All right. Community input. We have one. Alone.
Good evening. The Lake Mills Education Association and Lake Mills Education Support Professional Association are excited about the inauguration of Tony Evers as Governor of Wisconsin. By electing a lifelong educator, Wisconsin voters have demonstrated their support for high-quality public schools. Evers have, has already proposed an additional 1.4 billion for schools and under his plan, two-thirds of the public funding would come from the state budget. Equitable and adequate funding for schools is vital to preserve small class sizes and safe facilities needed to best support our students' learning. To this end, we hope Evers and the state legislature will take seriously the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission on school funding that met during 2018 to analyze the needs of our public schools. According to the Associated Press, the bipartisan commission recommended allowing per pupil revenue limits to increase each year based on inflation and spending more money on special education, English language learners, low-income students, rural districts with high costs for transportation, gifted and talented students, and early childhood programs. Such investments in education will help power our democracy and our economy for years to come. Please contact your legislatures if you, and let them know how you feel about these issues. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Now, moving on to the action items. Approval of December 10th Regular Board of Education meeting minutes.
I'll move the board to approve the minutes of the December 10, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the minutes of the December 10th meeting. We'll do a voice vote on, on that and the finance committee. There's some that, that were not there or he had to excuse themselves, so we'll go though, by those separately. The first one is the approval of the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
One abstention. Okay, that's passed. And the second is the approval of the finance committee meeting minutes.
I move the board to approve the proceedings of the December 10, 2018 Finance Committee meeting.
Second.
Okay, moved in second to approve the finance committee meetings. We have a number of people all over the place as far as that goes. So, let's do a roll call vote on that.
John Delaney?
I abstain.
Rachel Davies?
I abstain.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes with three abstentions. Approval of vouchers and invoices.
I move the board to approve the vouchers and invoices in the amount of $1,417,124.124.05 for the month of December 2018.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the vouchers and invoices. Any questions on that? Do a roll call on that, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Don Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approve, approval of the treasurer's report.
I move the board to approve the treasurer's report for the month of December 2018.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the treasurer's report. Questions, comments, and notes? Roll call, please.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of WASP resolutions.
I move the board give Mr. Radell the latitude to vote on the WASB resolutions at the upcoming 2019 WASB convention in the best interest of Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved in second to give Mr. Radell the latitude to vote as he represents the board. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of Epstein-Uen Architects contract.
I just wanted to add to this that the, this contract has been reviewed by our legal counsel, our insurance carrier, as well as the facilities committee.
Motion, please.
I move the board to approve.
I move the board to approve the contract with Epstein-Uen Architects for referendum work at the Lake Mills High School.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the contract for the EUA, Epstein-Uen Architects. Questions, comments? It's lengthy, but it covers all the bases. Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes unanimously. We also have approval of the Myron Construction Contract.
There are actually two of these. And again, our legal counsel and our insurance carrier scrutinized it all and we came up with revisions based on their recommendations.
I move the board to approve the contracts with Myron Construction Company Incorporated for referendum work at Lake Mills High School.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the contract with Myron. Roll call, please.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of the 2019-20 school district calendar.
So, as we work through the district calendar, the calendar will reflect a start date for students just after Labor Day. And it will end on June 5th. And it will include approximately a week and a half Christmas, or excuse me, winter break with the students returning on Thursday and Friday of that week just after the 1st of January. The calendar itself reflects all of the conference dates, the staff development, and each of you have reviewed that during the finance committee.
I'll move the board to approve the 2019-20 district calendar as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the next year's district calendar. Any questions on that? Some minor changes. Roll call, please.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Approval of high school course handbook for the 1920 school year.
This was presented last month by Mr. Vogel. And if you would pass that this evening, we can go into publication so the high school students can start selecting classes for next year.
I move, I move the board to approve the 2019-20-20 high school course handbook as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the handbook for next year in the high school. Questions? Comments, and notes? Roll call, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of varsity cross-country trip.
This is a trip that we've had for the last several years, but is an overnight trip, so we ask for your approval.
I move, I move the board to approve the August 13th through 15th, 2019 overnight trip for the varsity cross-country team at Devil's Lake. It is understood that the board will incur no cost and will accept no liability for any funds lost or for any reason.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the cross-country trip in August. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff resignation.
We have one resignation from the food service department this evening.
I move the board to approve the support staff resignation for Ms. Nancy Koltenowski as food service worker.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the support staff resignation. Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Approval of co-curricular resignations.
These resignations are actually for the 2019-20 school year.
I move the board to approve the co-curricular resignations for Mr. Sam Fossil as varsity boys soccer coach and Ms. Sierra Curran as JV girls volleyball coach, and thank them for their dedication to the student athletes of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the co-curricular resignations. Any questions on those? Roll call, please.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff resignation.
Again, this is for the 2019-20 school year. This is from Ms. Sierra Curran, who will be relocating to the Minneapolis area with her fiance and will eventually be married there. And so, we wish her the best and thank her for returning to Lake Mills for a brief time.
I'll move the board to approve the professional staff resignation of Ms. Sierra Curran as elementary and middle school physical education teacher at the end of the 2018-19 school year, and thank her for her dedication to the students of the Lake Mills Area School District.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the staff resignation. Questions on that? Roll call, please.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff letters of assignment.
I also see four on this list. One's a new hire that Ms. Seabird mentioned is crossing guard and then some additional hours for changing needs at the elementary school.
I move the board to approve the support staff letter of assignment for Ms. Brianna Belislic. Is that close?
We think it's Baslic.
Baslic. I apologize. It's crossing guard. In addition, I move the board to approve the following: Special Education Para Educators Increase of Hours to Ms. Sarah Hayes from 22 and 1/2 hours to 37 and 1/2 hours; Mr. Mike Winters from 20.75 hours to 37 and 1/2 hours; and Ms. Andrea Booth from 15 hours to 18.75 hours.
Second.
Moved in second to approve support staff letters of assignment. Questions on those at all? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. That passes unanimously. And finally, approval of gifts.
We begin the 2018 calendar year with generous gifts again.
I move the board to accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs at the Lake Mills Area School District. The Lake Mills School, the Lake Mills Music Parents donation of $300 to the drama department for the opening night reception of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. The Moravian Church's donation of $441.32 to the elementary school weekend backpack program. And the Moravian Church's donation of $1,500 to be split between the elementary school's weekend backpack program, the middle school's, school store, and the high school's, the mill.
Second.
Moved in second to approve all the gifts. Again, we thank all the contributions that we've received and continually received. They've been outstanding overall for the year. That also is a large number. So, roll call, please.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
John Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Future board agenda items.
We're gonna need to have a special meeting on January 28th to improve open enrollment, approve open enrollment numbers for 2019, 2020. The reason that we need to do this at the end of the month is because we are the chartering school for Jedi. And as the semester changes, students often apply to open enroll at that time. Once you set the open enrollment numbers, you can no longer accept open enrollment applications. no longer accept open enrollment applications. So by putting it at the end of the month, just before the deadline of February 1st, we allow students the ability to come into JDI. So that's why we would like to do that at the end of the month.
Time?
Time.
What time would you like?
I would estimate that this meeting would be less than ten minutes.
How does six o'clock sound?
Six, okay. Is everyone? Eight, six? All right, let's mark it down as six o'clock. Special Board Meeting on January 28th.
Thank you.
All right, closed session. I'll take a motion.
I move the board adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen-point-eight-five, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Aye, professional staff contracts, two district administrator evaluation.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn to executive session. Roll call, please.
Dawn Delaney?
Aye.
Rachel Davies?
Aye.
Robert Imperio?
Aye.
David Radell?
Aye.
Richard Mason?
Aye, and that passes unanimously. We are now adjourned to executive session.